Call the Bremen District Two Twenty Eight Regular Board Meeting to order. Can I get roll call please? Mrs. Gleason here. Ms. Bliss here. Mrs. Marshall Motley here. Lot here. Ms. Sterns here. Mr. Wickham here. Mrs. Ressler here. Please stand for the call.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, moving on to agenda item two point one. Can I get a motion to approve the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickham. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three committee of the whole meeting minutes? So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Ms. Sterns.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Moving on to our public hearing.
Board members, and as we've done many years now, I'd like to present our twenty twenty-four budget to you. And then we're going to open the floor to our public hearing for the budget. Um, you should have in front of you a folder with a copy of the budget. Um, I did post it on Board Docs, but this is just so you have it if there's anything you want to look through um, as we go through the presentation. Since we do have a couple of new board members, I thought it would be helpful just to kind of do a little introduction to the, to the budget um, and some pieces that come into play as we start putting the budget each year together. The first is that we are on a cash basis of accounting. This means that revenues are recorded when they are received and expenditures are recorded when they hit the books. This is important when it comes to the budget because, um, as you are aware, we saw last year, sometimes we do experience delays in getting our property tax payments. At the end of last year, we did not receive a May property tax payment, which we usually do. That would be when we normally see one of our bigger payments come through. Um, this affects the bottom line because as we go into the next year of budgeting, we're going to end without that revenue in our funds and then have to account for it being recorded at a later date. This is also something that we see with all of, a lot of our mandated categorical payments, including Title, Idea. Again, if we don't receive it in that fiscal year, we can't record it in that fiscal year. So that is money that we are not accounting for, that we technically should have gotten. The next thing I want to talk about is our financial designation. Um, I believe that in twenty-three, we will see a recognition status again. Something that I want to comment on though is our days' cash on hand. So, right now, this is my calculation with our unaudited figures. Um, our cash on hand is about seven months. That averages to about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-six, um, per day, which comes out to about nine point four million dollars a month. This is important when we go into the budget because it helps me determine how we're going to allocate for cash flows. Something that we're going to talk about tonight is the fact that Cook County has already announced that many of our property tax payments will likely not be coming in until December, possibly even January, much like last year. And then the third thing I want to talk about is the fact that we are subject to the PTEL, which is the tax gap. Um, tax revenues are limited to either CPI or five percent, whichever is lower. This is important when it comes to budgeting because, as I'm sure you all are aware, uh, inflation is up and things are just generally more expensive. However, the downside of that is that we are going to continue to pay more for goods and services based on, um, inflation, but we will not have the revenue to keep up with the expenditures. So just to highlight some, um, revenue budgets here, the first thing, property taxes, CPI and CPPRT. Again, as I mentioned, in July of twenty twenty-three, Cook County released that property taxes will be delayed again until December. CPI for our twenty twenty-three lobby will be five percent. And the Illinois Department of Revenue also released that CPPRT allocations will be decreasing by twenty-eight point eight percent. This amounts to about eight hundred thousand dollars in District Two Twenty Eight revenue. This is a substantial amount of money that we will not be receiving in FY twenty-four. Ultimately, it does affect the bottom line, so I think it's, uh, worth highlighting here. The next thing I want to talk about is our interest earnings. So kind of going back to our cash basis accounting, um, system. Normally, we would receive our installment, that installment of seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in August, or in July. I'm sorry, at the end of twenty-three, but we didn't receive it until July. So when, again, that seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we technically should have been allocating in FY twenty-three, but now we're going to move it forward to FY twenty-four. Um, it's also important to mention that our interest earnings are completely dependent on market conditions. So, basing the market trends, I've estimated that for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we should expect to receive about one point five million dollars. I also want to talk about our evidence-based funding. Our total allocation for this year is about forty-seven point one million dollars, plus the Property Tax Relief Grant. Um, I cannot say for sure right now what our Property Tax Relief Grant amount would be. Um, but in the past, we've received around three million dollars for our Property Tax Relief Grant. Something that's important to note here too is our percent of adequacy is at seventy-five percent, which means we are inching towards our adequacy target of eighty-six percent. We are still considered a Tier One assignment for our district. Um, but I think within the next two to three years, I anticipate we will move out of that, out of that tier and down to Tier Two. Something that I want to emphasize here is part of the reason that we have seen such drastic changes in our state funding is due to the fact that we are still a Tier One district. Once we move out of that tier though, we will stop seeing the drastic increases that we have seen. I do not anticipate that we would receive less than we are getting, but every year, and you're going to see in a couple of slides, the amount of additional money that we've been receiving in EDF dollars is jumping quite a bit. And then the last thing I want to comment on here is our ESSER funding. ESSER funds have been allowing the district to supplement district expenses and offset some of our certain increases. However, we are only, uh, looking to receive about three point one million of that left this year, which means those funds are not going to be there to continue to offset those cost increases and those expenses. The grant ends in September of twenty twenty-four, but we do already have that three point one million dollars allocated, which is important, uh, to keep in mind here as we go through our budget. Some of those items that would have normally been covered by ESSER are going to have to be built back into regular district dollars. I want to talk about some of our, um, expenditures for a minute. Um, obviously salaries and benefits make up the biggest part of our budget every year. This year, the base salary dollar amount is increasing by seven point five five percent. And then I've also included a five percent addition, um, to our addendas and stipends. We have increased all of our ancillary positions by five dollars a day, so all of our substitutes, um, tutors, project managers, all of those people, um, which you approved back in August with our twenty twenty-four rates of pay. So all of those additional, um, positions have received an increase in pay. The other important thing that goes into benefits is our health insurance. This year, we are looking at substantial increases to each of our claims. Um, ultimately, about seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars just in premium expenditures alone. Our PPO plan is self-funded, which means we do pay all of the claims as well. So our claims are not included in that, in that dollar amount. So this is just for the premiums in having each of our members on our plans. With purchase services, obviously, transportation is the biggest of that. Our Illinois and Alpha School Bus, um, contracts are expected to increase at ten percent this year, and then our private transportation at five percent. We use private transportation for many of our special ed students that need, um, a specific type of vehicle to get places and some of our McKinney Vento students as well. So we do have to end up paying for, um, sometimes cab fares or specialized buses, things like that. The other major piece of our purchase services is our professional and our security services. This year, um, Dr. Boswell mentioned that we are utilizing, uh, SRO at Tinley Park High School. That also gets paid from our purchase service budget, so that gets included into our regular, um, district dollars, which is in addition to our, uh, security services contract with Prudential Defense Solutions as well. Moving on to capital projects, um, I think it's important to note here that since twenty eighteen, all of our capital projects have been completed with the use of existing fund balances. This means that there has been no additional burden or impact to any of our taxpayers since twenty eighteen. We have paid for each of these projects with the use of either existing fund balance dollars or, in many cases, ESSER dollars as well. This year, um, we are looking at attractor purchase for Hillcrest and Tinley, and then new bleachers for Bremen and Tinley as well. Just to highlight some of our operating revenues, so there are three types of revenues, local, state, and federal. Local, we are at fifty-two point three percent, which is not uncommon to have our local sources be the biggest piece of the budget. However, we are moving, due to evidence-based funding, much closer to having the state picking up their full amount of state aid funding. So that's why you see, um, many years, we would see property taxes up in the sixty, sixty-five percent range making up our total revenues. But now, this year, I'm only estimating about forty-nine point oh six percent. Our federal grants include ESSER, Title, Idea, and then our Qualified School Construction Bond Credits. These began in twenty sixteen. It's about two point six million dollars per year, and that will continue until twenty forty-two. Highlighting some of our operating expenditures, obviously, the big takeaway here, salaries and benefits make up most of our, most of our budget. That means we're spending the most amount of dollars on the people that make up District Two Twenty Eight. The other thing I want to talk about here is our tuition. Um, this tuition is for all of our out-of-district placements, including RISE and then all of our special education, um, placements as well. I want to talk about our fund balances just for a minute. I'm going to start with our working cash. Working cash is probably the easiest one to explain because we don't pay for anything out of this fund. Think of it like a personal savings account. Most of the time, you do not spend money from your savings account. You usually move it to a checking account and then pay for whatever expenditure out of your checking. That's essentially what this is. In twenty eighteen, that was the last time we moved, um, money out of working cash and into an operating fund. The thing about working cash, you see, we do have a little bit of an increase each year. That's because the money accrues interest, which gets recorded as a revenue. But again, we do not send money out of this fund. Only keeping the money in our reserve balance. Our ed fund balance, um, is the largest of our fund balance, obviously. And just for comparison, I included our state aid dollars received and put into our ed fund balance each year, next to the total fund balance on the left. I think, again, this is extremely important. This is the reason why we are seeing these large fund balances. And again, those substantial jumps that you see each year will slow down and/or potentially stop completely moving forward. Again, once we hit that target, our adequacy target of eighty-five percent, that's it. That, we will see a much more even level fund balance moving forward. O and M is our operations and maintenance. This is how we pay for all of our capital projects, anything that has to, um, do with actually running and maintaining each of the buildings. You see a little bit more of a fluctuation here because there are more years where we will move forward with bigger capital projects, um, and some years where we don't. For many years, the O and M capital projects budget was kept re- fairly steady at about one to two million dollars per year. We have completed many of these projects now, um, so we will see, again, a little bit more of a leveling out and a little bit more consistency. We did, in twenty twenty-two, the jump from twenty-one to twenty-two, again, just completing significant capital projects. Transportation. This one is a little hard to look at sometimes, uh, considering that it's pretty much non-existent in twenty twenty-three. I put the total expenditures next to the fund balance for transportation just to illustrate the point of what exactly happened. From twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, expenditures nearly doubled. Our twenty twenty-three ending fund balance was less than ten thousand dollars. Again, it is substantial to note, this is essentially out of the district's hands. We are at the mercy of our transportation companies. There's a lot of different factors that go into each of our contracts every year with Illinois School Bus, Alpha School Bus, and then many of our private transportation companies that we use as well. This is essentially us draining our fund balances, but making sure that we're getting kids to school as best we can. So, while it is kind of, again, hard to look at, um, I do think it is worth noting here that, um, your transportation fund balances, at least for the time being, are not going to be nearly as high as they have been in the past. Again, this is just something that we're going to have to work with. During twenty twenty, when COVID happened, we were not paying our full expenditures. We continued to make contract payments based on the fact that we wanted to help Illinois School Bus and Alpha School Bus stay in business during the pandemic when people were off work. Um, so we did continue to make payments, but we were only making them at, I think, eighty-five percent of our regular bill. That also leads to part of why there are such drastic differences between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three. And then just to put it all together, so your operating fund balances are going to be the ending fund balances for each of our operating funds, Ed, O and M, Transportation, IMRA, and then a working cash fund balance. As you can see, we did have a couple of years between twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty where there were significant increases to our fund balances. But as I mentioned now, especially with transportation costs increasing the way that they are, we can expect to see just a little bit more consistency across the board moving forward. Maintaining fund balances is something that helps keeps the district financially solid. Going back to what I was saying in the beginning about our days of cash on hand, um, that plays into how many months of reserves we still have. So, maintaining fund balances should remain a, a top priority, in my opinion. Um, and it's also important to note with the days of cash on hand, so if we have seven months of reserves on hand, that means if the district doesn't receive another dollar for the rest of the year, we will only make it seven months. We can only pay our bills for seven months. So, just something to keep in mind when you're considering why is, why are fund balances important? That's why. Because having that financial stability and that long-term security is extremely important to maintaining your healthy financial status. I always like to do a takeaway, so kind of already started in on this, uh, fiscal responsibility, financial security. Even in light of some of our difficult financial times, we have been able to maintain, uh, healthy fund balances and a healthy financial state. So, um, even in light of all that, being able to, uh, maintain that status of recognition over the years, I think is, is something that the district should be proud of and is due to our careful spending analysis and fiscal responsibility. And remaining fiscally responsible is always going to be an important piece of, of that security. And then I also just wanted to comment on how else we're going to maintain some of that by continuing to align our district goals and resources, and then also constantly monitoring factors that impact financial performance, including legislation, economic trends, community trends, and so on. Does anyone have any questions?
What moves us from Tier One to Tier Two?
What moves us from Tier One to Tier Two is when we meet the mark that the Illinois State Board of Education says that we are now adequately funded, meaning the state picks up what they believe is their fair share of our revenue bill.
Okay, how did you come to?
Wait, Mark, we're going to put up the floor to the public in a second.
Okay, okay.
All right, so if there are no further questions from the board members this time, Mrs. Ressler, I would ask you to please open the floor to the public regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. And I would also like to disclose the total fund balance for all nine funds of seventy-two million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to open the floor for item three point one? The public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget plus cash balance disclosure.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Motley. Roll call please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
The floor is now open. Do we have any public comments on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget or cash balance disclosure?
Yes, how did we come to pay our eighty-five percent of the school bus transportation, even though they wasn't transporting a lot of kids?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I don't remember voting on that either. Who made the decision to do that?
To pay our bills?
To pay eighty-five percent when we wasn't getting full service, because a lot of kids would stay at home.
It was approved in April of twenty twenty. It absolutely.
So, are they going to raise us ten percent on what amount is that ten percent going to be?
We pay a daily rate for Illinois School Bus based on the number of routes that we have running throughout the district. Every year, we sit down with Illinois School Bus, our associate principals, um, building administration, and determine how many routes are needed. Based on that, we set the routes up throughout the district, and then we pay a fee per route, per day, on the routes that we run in the district.
Yes, I, I'll for you that back in twenty thirteen. What is the rate now?
I don't know enough time ahead of.
It's like, uh, the main rate that you're probably asking about is the regular school transportation route. It's about just under a hundred dollars per run.
Okay.
So it comes out to about a hundred and fifty grand per month?
The run is a hundred bucks, so like Route Seven for Bremen is a hundred bucks.
Well, you know, that's a significant jump from twenty thirteen and now, ten years.
It absolutely is.
Seventy.
I also mentioned, uh, my grandson goes to another high school in the area. They can't even get bus service, like, once a week he gets bus service. And there are elementary schools. I mean, anywhere you go, you can look and see bus drivers want it, they just can't. So we're lucky to have bus service in many ways.
I, I would agree with that, you know, it's still way up there. Then they want a ten percent on top of that, which Miles is going to make about a hundred and ten dollars per run.
That's.
A lot of that is that they've increased the, um, salary of the drivers significantly to try to get more people.
That's going up by about forty percent over the last three years.
Average rate is twenty-five dollars an hour in this district.
Right.
That's kind of my point, though. We don't really, I, I don't work for Illinois School Bus. I can't say this is what you need to pay your employees.
Right.
We're sort of at their mercy with that, so this is something we're going to have to deal with and budget for and. Move on to the other ones.
Are there any other public comments? All right, if there are no other public comments, can I please get a motion to close the floor for item three point one?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Motley. Can I get roll call please? Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler? All right, the floor is now closed for item three point one. Moving on to item three point two, e-learning renewal.
Uh, at this time, Mrs. Ressler, I'd like to ask that you open the floor to the district's e-learning renewal public hearing.
Can I get a motion to open the floor for item three point two, the public hearing for the District Two Twenty Eight e-learning renewal?
Come on.
Is that everyone?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
The floor is now open. Are there any public comments on the District Two Twenty Eight e-learning renewal?
What is it?
It's the renewal of the e-learning plan that we've had for the last three years, when there's an emergency.
Yeah, so when all the kids were, were ripping from home on their iPads and having a e-plan versus in the classroom, there's a plan for that, so just renewing that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, if there are no other public comments, can I get a motion to close the floor for item three point two?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Can I get roll call please? Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler? All right, the floor is now closed for item three point two. Moving on to our reports, our superintendent reports.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Sorry to have to report the, uh, very upsetting, challenging news that the Hillcrest staff, students, and community experienced with the loss, loss of our freshman student, Marshawn Mitchell. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family and all those that are impacted by his passing. And I would ask that everyone in attendance today, uh, please observe a brief moment of silence on his behalf. Thank you. Uh, additionally, for the principal's report, item four point two, uh, the principals agreed that, given the floor to Mr. Cowan, the Hillcrest principal today would be most appropriate as he has a message that he'd like to share with, uh, the community and, uh, the attendees today.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I like to come up and, and usually tell some good stories of Hillcrest High School, and, uh, tonight's story is not going to be a good one. Um, so, everyone here has heard different portions of, of stories and rumors and, and whatever, um, since the incident that went on on Friday night. But I just wanted to kind of set the record and, and, and let everyone know sort of what we've been through uh, as a community, as a school, since, uh, since Friday night. So, um, before I get to, to any particulars, um, I just want to point out how much I appreciate the support that I've received from the. I just want to point out how much I appreciate the support that I've received from the board since Friday. The other principals have been just, just, the outpouring of support has been phenomenal and very much appreciated. With Friday night's incident, I'll back up a little bit. Up until that point, we had fantastic homecoming. Hawks win, that was a good one. Game ends about eight-thirty, stadium's fully cleared, incident free, most of the parking lot is cleared. And as typically what we do at the end of the game as part of our safety plan, is we kind of, as a group, deans, myself included, we kind of walk the students out of the parking lot, you know, because some want to hang out. They'll hang out all night if you let them. So we kind of walk them out. So where the incident occurs on 175th Street, that is that those are the remaining students at that point. And by the video that we looked at, we had about fifty students remaining at that point, all out front, either waiting for rides, whatever it might have been. So as the incident occurs, the shooting occurs on 175th Street, man, my, my deans, all five of them, run to the scene. They don't run away from the scene, they run to the scene. My two female deans, Kim Spalding, Marisha Matthews, are the first ones there with Marshawn down on the ground. And I asked Kim, I went, "What were you doing? You know, you didn't even know it was safe at that point. Why are you running towards that?" She said, "I didn't want him by himself. I didn't want him lying on the ground by himself." So the other deans, they all make sure to get kids cleared out as much as they could into a safe space. We put them in the building, took them wherever we could to make sure that they were safe. Country Club Hills Police and actually one of my, one of my football coaches, Tremaine Weaver, stay on the scene with Marshawn and performed CPR on him until the EMS arrives. So obviously, horrible tragic event that goes on. But we have to prepare some type of plan for Monday when we have students come back in the building, when we have staff come back in the building. And the staff at Hillcrest, in terms of the, you know, forget about that it's a Saturday or Sunday, you know, counselors, social workers, the administrative team work all weekend long to make sure that we put together a plan that we can be fully supportive of our students, because we knew that it was not gonna be a good day yesterday. So the plan basically entails, you know, us using our IMC as a support center. And, you know, we had, we had so many community and different types of groups reach out and say, "Hey, you know, we'll help you out as much as we can. We'll do whatever we can for you." We chose actually, and Dan Dunn, you know, back when you, when you brought, you and Lily brought your dogs up here to Oak Forest, and I thought that was the most ridiculous thing in the world. I was so wrong, man. Those support dogs yesterday and today for our students, amazing, amazing what they did for our kids. Just, just to be able to sit and relax and hang out with the dogs, pet the dog. I didn't know the power of that until I, you know, until Dan, when you brought the dog in and then what I, what I saw today and yesterday. So we've got this great plan yesterday, and the students come in and they're in the IMC and everything, it's not going well, obviously, but it, but it's going and we're supporting our kids. I met at seven fifteen in the morning with the whole staff to alleviate any types of fears that they had, that this was gonna be some type of retaliation or something like that. And, and they, man, the staff didn't ask many questions. I know there was a bunch of uneasiness, but they stepped up and just went into class and took care of business with our kids. And then a fire breaks out. Yes, we have a fire. So electrical fire occurs completely, you know, just random, so we end up sending the kids home yesterday. So today, we basically carried out what we were going to yesterday. So we had twenty-five to thirty students in the IMC all day long. Lots of tears, lots of different emotions, different kids coping different ways. But between the social workers and counselors and teachers and administrators and security guards and everybody that stepped in to help, I really feel that we were able to wrap our arms around our students as much as possible in an absolutely horrible situation. So today after school, one of our parapros, Mr. Liggins, led a prayer group after school, and then we had a bit of a follow-up meeting with staff today at three-thirty. Just, just any types of questions that were still out there. One question that, as I already alluded to, were the students that committed these horrible acts, our students, were the Hillcrest students, you know, those types of things. The rumors that have gone on, I'm sure if you checked anything out online in the last, you know, three, four days, so much false information going on out there. So no, they are not. Country Club Hills Police has stepped up. They've been huge. They've been in our building a lot, working with us, working with, you know, our deans on the video. You know, the video cameras show the exact story of where this car was, where it ended up, how this, this crime occurred and things like that. And so it's, it's my hope that we'll have some type of resolution to that really soon. In terms of the, the supports in, in, you know, video cameras, something, something as easy as that, like without having those video cameras and the support and the resources that we have available, we're not able to figure out who that is, you know. We've got two hundred video cameras that catch everything. And so it just, you know, when you, when you say that it takes a village or those types of, you know, what we look at as cliches sometimes, man, couldn't, couldn't be more true what happened in the past few days. So with all of that, you know, we're just gonna keep moving on. We're not, we're not gonna have another day in the IMC tomorrow. We're gonna have our students back in class, try to maintain some type of a schedule for our students. And the ones that need some individual care, obviously, you know, we've talked to the teachers about allowing those students out of class. When I, when I spoke with Marshawn's mother and grandmother on Sunday, you know, they fully understood what it was that we were attempting to do, and there wasn't anything, you know, you should have done more or anything. None of that went on. But they need support too. And so it's not just our students, but, but it's Marshawn's mom and grandmother and family. And he's got a brother at Prairie Hills, and he's got a cousin that's with us, and all those people, same thing that we did with all our students. We're gonna, at Hillcrest, wrap our arms around all those people and try and get them through this tragedy as well. So, yeah, I just wanted to kind of share some of that information with everyone here and let you all know how thankful I am that I have such an awesome administrative team to step in the way that they did. My social workers, my counselors, the teachers, like just, just amazing outpouring of support that we've received in the last few days. And at Hillcrest, we're just gonna keep moving on and try and overcome some of the obstacles we've had in the last few days. So thank you for your time.
Moving on to item four point three, our FOIA requests.
Thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. Since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. We had multiple requests from Mr. Mark Johnson requesting, following, including the following information. The last time there was a forensic audit on district finances from nineteen ninety-three to present. Requests for external video of Bremen's front door of July eighteen, twenty twenty-three, minutes from a January twenty-twenty-one board meeting and committee, the whole minutes from a May twelfth, twenty-four board meeting. And these requests have all been filled. Janine Asmus from, I'm sorry, requested the name and every district employee who is certified as a school librarian and who's currently working in the capacity in our district's libraries, library, media centers, and academic school year. This request has been completed. And Vince Espy from Prairie State Wire requested the number of English learner students enrolled by grade level for the last five years and the current year, number of bilingual teachers employed by the school district for the last five years and current year, and the number of children of immigrant asylum seekers enrolled in the school district broken down by grade level and current school year. This request has been completed. That's all we have.
Thank you, Dr. Sikora. I'd like to open up more comments with a statement. The Bremen High School District 228 Board of Education is deeply sorry for the loss of Hillcrest student Marshawn Mitchell. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family and to all the individuals impacted by his tragic loss. Bremen High School District is committed to providing a safe learning environment to all of our stakeholders. The district has invested considerable resources towards this mission. Each campus employs police officers and security guards. The buildings are equipped with comprehensive camera systems, and we have secure entrances monitored by staff. Last year, the board purchased weapon detectors, which are used at each campus on a daily basis. The district is also in the process of installing swipe card access technology on all of our doors. Most importantly, the district has formed strong partnership with our local law enforcement agencies and municipalities. In fact, our administrators are members of the Youth Violence Task Force, led by Chief Davis at Hazel Press Police Department. Our safety plan is dynamic, always evolving plan, and District 228 remains open to suggestions and areas of improvement. If you would like to share your concerns or suggestions, please feel free to contact the building and our district administration directly. Additionally, Hillcrest Principal Mr. Ron Towner is hosting a parent and community members, is hosting parents and community members at Hillcrest this Thursday, September nineteen, September twenty-first?
September twenty-first, I'm sorry.
September twenty-first, at five-thirty PM in the cafeteria for anyone interested and would like to attend. Are there any other board member reports? I have a couple things, Mrs. Wrestler. I'd like to share an email that I received from an Oak Forest father, Mrs. Agler. She said, "I really liked, I really have to give another shout-out to the special ed team. Lisa Giglio-Bicet, Colleen Curran, Cassie Reed, R.G. Dabba Bush, Jackie Bergwall. Jay Thornmeyer is a great dean. He truly stays on top of bad behavior. Both last year and this year, my daughter had an issue and he handled it so well. The kids who were mean to my daughters haven't bothered her again. Also, Kevin Kajuski has been great to work with for our academics. My daughter even made National Honor Society with her autism. Another one is working on several parts of it. It really takes a village, and I think the special ed team has hit their groove. Some were newer and some were seasoned, but they have grown into each other. Both of my daughters are autistic and very different. I have worked on so many different things with each one every day, along with running a business and home, so forth, that when you get a group of people who actually understand and help your child with special needs thrive, you are grateful. And I am grateful, and you guys should be proud of these people of us." I want to share that. I'd also like to make another comment in light of the last few days. Now, we talk a lot about leaders, and sometimes you don't know you have one until something like this happens. I'd like to commend Dr. Sikora and the entire central administrative team, and Mr. Towner, and all the people at Hillcrest. The tragedies and the electric fire of this last few days, that doesn't often happen in anyone's career, much less within three days of each other. You wanna know what a leader is? I hope you listen to Mr. Towner and Dr. Sikora, that's what a leader is, and you really know you have one when tragedy hits. Thank you.
I'd also like to commend other one about administration, we understand. The information that we got, it's been years since we really got any information. We got more than I think we expected. I also, these weapon detectors, I don't know how many people are aware, we are moving those to the field, so people who have to pass to get before games, so our games are safe. There's a petition going around calling for the closure of Hillcrest, filled with inaccuracies and lies. So if anyone wants to really get information, I would strongly recommend you talk to someone before you consider signing it, because there's nothing in there that's accurate. I also want to commend Dr. Sikora for setting up another vaccine clinic for us. And this time, he actually gets credit for it.
Any other board member reports?
I just wanna echo the statements of my fellow board members. The leadership vaccine over the last couple of days is leaps and bounds impressive. It's shaking me to the core. I hurt for Marshawn's family and friends. It's shaking me to my core. As a community member, as an alum of Hillcrest High School, my husband gets on me all the time, because I'm always bragging about Hillcrest. I'm always sharing my experiences. Sorry, you should have been a hawk. But, and I also have a parent, I'm sorry, I'm a parent of a student at Hillcrest. So I had that conversation with my child. That, that was hard. That was hard. We got home in this afternoon. She goes, "Mom, what do I do?" I said, "You go to school. You're, you're safe at your school, but be aware of your surroundings. And you are blessed to have teachers and leaders around you." So again, Dr. Sikora, Mr. Towner, everybody, thank you so much for really taking care of the community of our students. I'm totally indebted to you all.
All right, if there are no other board member reports, we'll move on to new business.
Item five point one, the bills, addendum to bills, payroll and CPS bills. The superintendent is recommending this item for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye. Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Item five point two is the FY twenty twenty-four compensation reports. The superintendent is recommending this item for full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye. Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Item five point three is the fiscal year 2024 budget and resolutions. The superintendent is recommending this item for full board approval. And just as a side note, please don't forget to sign the cover page before you leave.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye. Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Item five point four is the Country Club Hills Plan and Development Incentive Agreement. The superintendent is recommending this item for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye. Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Item five point five, Dr. Bluebiter? Board members, item five point five is a policy revision to, or policy seven one ninety. In August of twenty twenty-one, Public Act one oh two zero three three nine was passed and required school boards, school boards to create and adopt a plan to reduce and eliminate the use of timeout and physical restraint in schools. District 228 has had no in-district incidents to report over the past four school years. After consulting with our district attorney, we are recommending a change to our policy to prohibit the use of isolated timeout, timeout, and physical restraint in our programs for the remainder of this policy. It's important to note that prohibiting physical restraint does not absolve the district or its staff and administration of our duty to maintain safety in our schools, and staff is still able to use a momentary period of physical restriction to prevent students from hurting themselves, hurting others, or damaging property. The superintendent is recommending this updated policy for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Any discussion?
How are outplacement symbols that we use? I know they're not like, there's a wide variety, but can we ensure that they also?
Lisa may be able to add to this. What is an example for us? We use the Southwest Co-op, which I'm a board member of, and so they would need, as a board, try to be a member of, to adopt similar language. They're probably gonna have to start considering that, is all the districts will do that too. They're probably going to have to start considering that as all the districts will do that too. However, in fairness, there's sometimes a special ed population that requires that type of support because the kids have a tendency to actually hurt themselves more freely than others. So they're going to have to consider that policy very closely.
Any other comments, questions? All right, roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Item five point six, the superintendent?
Item five point six is for the purchase of two John Gear compact facility tractors, one for Hillcrest High School and one for Tinting Park High School. These will be purchased in a sourceful purchasing cooperative with a cost of fifty thousand, thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents for the Hillcrest tractor and forty-eight thousand, five hundred, thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents for the Tinting Park tractor. Difference in cost between the two is due to a fifteen hundred dollar difference in trade value for the current tractors. This is a recommendation.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point seven, Dr. Boswell.
Board, thank you. As we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting last week, I'd like to recommend the board approve the purchase for fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for penetration testing from Heartland Business Systems and budgeting seventy-five hundred dollars for patch management software from Microsoft Endpoint Management. I'd recommend this for the whole board.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Marshall Motley, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point eight, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Five point eight is the renewal of our e-learning plan that will last for three years. The superintendent is recommending this renewal for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point nine is an overnight field trip request for the marching band at Hillcrest. The superintendent is recommending this for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Marshall Motley, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Item five point ten, Dr. Sikora?
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Item five point ten is a freshman and transfer student day new business item prepared by the Bremen District 228 Joint Faculty Association and submitted by Board President Greg Fitch. In his documents that you'll find in Board Docs, he had proposed action language, a rationale, and included some support documentation, including the schedules for all four freshman days. His proposed action, I should say the JFA's proposed action language, would ask the board to consider getting involved in the ten, or I'm sorry, the scheduling and the programming of freshman only day. While the administration, myself included, fully support freshman only day. We feel that there's a lot of value to that. I do not believe and I do not recommend that the board get involved in the scheduling and/or the operation of that day. I feel as though it's in the right hands of the building principals and my recommendation would be that it continue to be under the direction of the principal and the building administration.
Are we sure that these are all equitable? Any, you know, I've always been, my kid shouldn't suffer or benefit because they go to one school over another.
Yeah, good question. I could speak specifically to that. And I don't know that it was included in our support documentation, but I would say the programming is equitable. There's ways to do it differently. As you can see, even in the documents provided, as an example, Hillcrest had planned a guest speaker. Well, that's based on the needs and the current, you know, maybe current focus for the school. I know, I know it was shared with the building administration and they were working through professional council as well. And one of the examples would be, well, at Old Forest, they don't give student tours. Well, Old Forest is providing an open house the day prior where school tours are part of that program. I think there was around five hundred, five hundred and fifty parents and students that were supported there. Again, I think in that case, the building administration decided that in addition to the freshmen, being able to walk their schedule, it's nice to have the families be able to participate as well. So again, that's an example of, well, there's no reason to build a building tour in the freshman day when they participated at night forever. I can tell you from experience as well, principal at Old Forest for ten years, I changed that schedule every year. Sometimes there were things that we added, minutes to classes, shortened minutes to classes. There were times where I had counselors do some work. There was times where I had different groups come up and say, "Hey, we'd like to get on that schedule." The flexibility that that can, that can take place when you bring that up to the principal, I think, is in the right hands. And by all means, I still encourage the building administration and the teachers and the teachers you need to discuss for your plan. I read today that in the minutes of their professional council, there is even, you know, kind of a path moving forward that maybe a committee would be joined to discuss this very topic. I fully support that as well.
Any motion?
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the board to not get involved and to leave scheduling and programming of freshman and new student orientation to be decided at a building level.
And second. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Any additional discussion?
First of all, I'm a huge proponent of the freshman and transfer student day. I think it's a great service to our students. But I don't think the nitty gritty of how that happens is board business. It is policymakers.
This won't stop them from, say, there's an issue bringing in through labor management or bringing any concerns back to us by us saying, "Oh, no, we said we weren't here about."
Yeah, they asked for this to be, you know, consideration and action, right? So they can always still pursue other avenues if they so desire. There's a process for that. I don't believe we have a contractual issue, but I would have to review a grievance if that's a, this week is the concern.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Roll call please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
I'm going to stay because I don't think we should even be voting on this personally.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel recommendations. Dr. Duckens?
Yeah, it's item six. Under resignation, Benjamin Ramsey and Christine Chastity Beal. Under leaves, Camille Offord, Cheryl Harris Amida, and Jessica Bokash. Under resignation, Jessica Torres. Under employment, Edward Christosik, Roberta Jones, Olivia Burbott, James Thompson, Joseph Malenti, Barbara Lunsford, Rhonda Craco, Elizabeth Stern, Eden Robolito, Kathleen McNeely, Matthews Yorkino, Elizabeth Douglas, Kyra Golden, Rukat Adavizen, Vanessa Solis, Gabriel Gonzalez, Carrie Lawson, and Marquise Roundy. And under change in employment, Juan Martinez and Adam Villafreca. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Marshall Motley. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Abstain.
Moving on to communication. Any comments from the public? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson? I'm sorry. Um, okay, okay.
Hmm?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Um. We had a kid named Ryan Royal. I'm sure Mr. Towner knows or knew. Uh, he was also shot. Says to me. Um. On May second of this year, a group of leaders met at Hillcrest to talk about this very incident of gun violence when one of our buses, the Hillcrest bus, got shot up or was shot at, whatever. I never could get the report from that. The chief of police of Hazelcrest gave a full presentation out there with about four or five mayors being at this meeting talking about how we can help our kids to avoid this type of matter. Now, as a city board member at the time, I heard nothing about this. No meaning, no vote, or nothing like that because that's something that we should have been looking into and trying to make sure that we have policies in place that could have probably saved this boy's life. I came to the first game and I don't know if you, it never got out there that I saw a young lady with a weapon. And of course, I reported it to Mr. Towner and he took immediate action and they removed the weapon from that child at a football game. We have got to step up and make sure that we're doing everything that we can to help our kids. Because if your child was on that bus and they were being shot at, we, by the grace of God, we didn't have five or six kids dead. And we should have known about that as a board to be able to put in policies that would help our students. And nobody has gotten back to me to let me know, even though I FOIA'd it. Uh. They didn't answer the question on why we wasn't aware of it. I just happened to be at another meeting and heard about that this chief of police was going to be there at our school giving this very important lecture on how we can try to save our kids. And there's a number of organizations out there that's willing to help us. All students, and it's not just for black kids, it's for the white kids who are suffering too. And, you know, yes, they set it up, Mr. Towner and Dr. Sikora, but this information should have been disseminated enough amongst us to be able to determine that we can do things that can save the kids. And there's many organizations out there that's willing to help us. If your child was on that bus that day or your child is walking home out there and getting shot at, there's no excuse in it. If we knew about it, what we can do about it. Uh, developing relationships, I don't know if this kid had threats against him when he left, but I know that the chief of police said that kids was texting all day about what was about to happen. And nobody from the teachers to the administration to the coaches ever had enough relationships to find out that things like that happened. Okay? I, first day that I got on the coaching job and I was announced there, I took two kids home. One kid, I found out that he was being raised by his grandmother. So I asked her, "Do you have another son that could step in and fill for whatever reason the father wasn't around?" Okay, thank you. And it was a situation where she called her older son who was thirty-two years old and he said that I would be happy to be the father of that kid's life.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other public comments? Yes. Jessica Kelly.
Hello, board members. Um, I think that you probably are noticing some unfamiliar faces in the room, but I would like for you to get familiar with us. We are the parents of the freshman class of Hillcrest. And obviously, our kids are impacted and devastated by the recent events that happened. Um, but not only that, I know that you guys are working to provide our students with resources as far as grievous counseling and all of that, but, um, to say that we are here to represent after the fact necessarily doesn't help us, right? And so, um, as parents, we're trying to just even get together to even understand what is our role in the community and how we can help. And so, um, there's some feelings among the parents about the resources that I provided to Hillcrest versus the other kids that are within Bremen Township. And, um, I for sure know that I paid no taxes to make sure that my son goes to school, has a quality education, and returns home safely. And so, um, even just reviewing the events that happened leading up to the death of Marshawn, there was a lot of things that probably could have been addressed. One being the resources as far as the lighting on our campus. It is pitch dark out there. Um, not only is it pitch dark out there, but then our kids were encouraged to wear all black to an event. So you have the perfect environment for catastrophe, and it happened, unfortunately. Um, in this event, it hit close to me because my son was with the victim minutes before he was killed. And so, we could talk about all day about the disparities of the black community versus the white community and all that, but it's obvious that we are not getting the same treatment as the other kids that are within Bremen Township. And for myself, I would like for that to be addressed and changed. And if we could start off with increased security, for one. I know that there has been talks about those who are involved in that incident. We have a game with those individuals that's coming up with Eisenhower High School. How do we parent that? How do we address that anxiety among our kids? How do we encourage our kids to give the best on that field if they know that the opponent they're playing has something to do with their classmates being killed? This is a lot. Um, just entering high school, our kids homecoming has turned into a home going, and that's pretty sad. And so, I want you guys to get familiar with Jessica Kelly and everyone who was here because we don't want our presence not to be heard. Or we don't want you guys to feel like, oh, if they're not showing up, they must don't care. We do care, and we do want our voices heard. And so, if there's things or resources, like increased security for this gang that's coming up. I know you can hear it in my voice, there's anxiety. The lights that is on the street, or even getting Country Club Hills police to have more of a presence. I know they were there, but to walk the grounds, to be there to show that if there's anything that is out of line, it will be addressed. And so, that's my reason of being here today. I actually miss class to be here today with you guys, um, just so that we can address that to see if there could be more resources allocated to our students. I'm just looking here on you guys' agenda today. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven tutors that's allocated to Tinting Park School. We need those same resources. We, we need those same resources for our kids to now ensure, I'm glad that our athletic department is great and all, but we have parents who care about academics. And so, if we could allocate some of those same resources to our students, we can ensure that not only are they getting a quality education for what we pay for and our tax dollars go to, but then they also are ensured that they can come home. And when I tell my baby, "See you later, have a good day," he's going to come home soon. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jessica Kelly. Before you leave, Jessica Kelly?
Yes.
I, I want to thank you and all the parents for coming here. I really do from the bottom of my heart. I'm so glad that you're here.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know if you, if you guys were here during the statement earlier on Thursday at five thirty at Hillcrest High School cafeteria. They are going to have kind of a town hall parent community forum. I think your concerns and your suggestions and recommendations would be greatly appreciated there. We appreciate them too, but I think you can get that response from the administration and the teachers and the staff on that day also. And I know some of us will be there to show our support to make sure that you guys get that.
Thank you.
I will add to Mrs. Russell's comments. There's some things that you brought up that we're happy to answer for you at that time. And if you can't make it, you can email Mr. Towner or myself and we And if you can't make it, you can email Mr. Towner or myself and we can fill in some of those blanks for you too, to get you the accurate information and open lines of communications. Appreciate you and all the parents for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Also to add on, Ms. Lot and I both have students at Hillcrest. So we want to thank you also to echo those statements too. Just thank you all for coming out and we do all share your concerns too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon, the map.
She said that there were some of the same concerns. So as she continues speaking.
She pretty much said.
Any comments, any other statements?
We invite you to the meeting on Thursday as well, happy to answer any specific questions for you as well.
Yeah. I'll be a familiar face too, I'll say that because I do have five children, four are adopted, and they're literally stair stepper, so they each will be coming out the next three years going into high school. So this is very important to me to know what I'm getting into in my children, so you will see me a lot too.
Thank you.
Are you guys part of the parent advisory over there?
We made our own advisory. We just started a group chat and we link arms together and unfortunately, this event made us closer. So you guys were most certainly to see our faces more often.
Ron, is it still active?
It's not.
It's not, I'm sorry, I was a part of it and it was a good thing, but it's not been active since Mr. Alexander left. When he was there, we was part of the parent advisory. And it actually was a good program and informative because I have four children that have went through Hillcrest. And this is actually the first time anything, my oldest is twenty-three, and it's the first, and my baby, he's seventeen now, a senior at Hillcrest. So this is, yeah, even with me, with having older kids, this situation has hit home and it's hit club. But the parent advisory, I feel that it's a good program that we need to bring back.
I used to participate in that as well.
Yeah.
I think that it's needed as well because most of us here are from the football team. So of course, we're close knit because we're the hots. But there are other parents who are amongst somebody who are not as close knit as we are. And so there's mixed messaging that's happening.
Right.
And I think that a parent advisory would be something that is needed just so that the message is scattered across the board and there's no confusion or extra anxiety created among the kids because this group of parents is saying one thing, but then this group of parents has more information. So it should be some type of parent advisory so that the message is clear.
Appreciate this suggestion.
Before I move on to my next item, I'm going to, we're going to close for a closed session, but if you guys wouldn't mind sticking around just so I can, some of us can introduce ourselves to you if you want, happy. So with that being said, if there are no other public comments, can I get a motion to go to closed session to consider information regarding students in the case of five ILCS subsection one twenty two C nine?
So moved.
Second. By Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Gleason, can I get roll call please? Mr. Wickholm.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye, Ms. Lot.
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall Motley.
Aye.
Ms. Sterns.
Aye.
Mrs. Russell.
Aye.